Everyone. I love those smiling faces. Got out of first period. Nick, you want to roll call for us?
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Good morning Supervisor Madron. Chair Bone.
Hi.
Supervisor Wilson.
Aki.
Supervisor Royal.
Here. Y'all have to say something different.
It's because we are. Can we do the salute to the flag, please? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What are we going to pull today?
Good morning Chair Bone. There's one item, D 32, that is being pulled for discussion today.
So with that, we'll move to the consent calendar. We have quite a few proclamations we're going to do today. So we'll get through... Does anybody have anything they want to pull? Everybody, she's already but any second thoughts or anything? Good.
Nothing in addition to what was mentioned, but I do have a proclamation to read.
Yep. So we will... The first proclamation will be, I think, from Supervisor Royal.
All right, and we have the folks from Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration here. You can go ahead and come on up for the reading of the proclamation. Welcome. This is a proclamation in honor of Humboldt County's Transition Age Youth Collaboration Sweet 16 anniversary. Whereas on April 16th, 2024, Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, HCTAC, will celebrate its Sweet 16 birthday in recognition of its founding in the spring of 2008. And whereas the HCTAC is a youth advocacy and leadership development organization dedicated to empowering young people with lived experience to transform the foster care, juvenile justice, mental health, and homelessness services systems. And whereas 16 years ago, the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, convened a conference in response to the Humboldt County Foster Youth Resource Mapping Project, during which advocates and powerful foster youth leaders spoke out about the experiences and interconnected needs of system-impacted youth, leading DHHS to partner with California Youth Connection, Youth in Mind, and the Youth Training Project to create HCTAC. And whereas since that time, HCTAC has earned state and federal recognition for bringing together public and private partners, creating significant improvements to our community through tireless policy advocacy, training youth-serving professionals, and building innovative programming and interventions. And whereas HCTAC believes that with appropriate resources and support, all system-involved youth are capable of becoming leaders for system transformation, having developed countless leaders in communities across Humboldt County who continue to bring their knowledge, experience, and expertise to improving the lives of young people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and commends the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration for its 16 years of youth advocacy and leadership, and encourages the community to join in the celebration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Callan's coming through security.
Okay. Okay. We can just take a while to arrange ourselves. Fix it in post, Photoshop them in.
Okay. Perfect timing.
Connie, do you want to be in it?
Good timing.
Connie, you want? Right, okay, girl, we can press them in. Okay. Okay, okay. Can we see everybody?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, Calipeltie Olson. I have lived experience in the behavioral health and homelessness systems, and I'm the lead organizer of the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, a former peer coach, and a former member of the Youth Advisory Board. Esteemed Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for honoring our upcoming anniversary of our program. This powerful crucible that empowers young people to transform their trauma to power and positive change, and has improved my life and the lives of countless others. HCTAC began in 2008 as a vision developed in partnership by then-director of DHHS Phil Crandall and current and former foster youth advocates, who saw the common need of all system-impacted young people to have a seat at the table. A vision that centered the voices and lives of young people as experts with invaluable insight as to how systems could cause less harm and the youth of Humboldt County could live healthier, more successful lives. I joined HCTAC in 2010 at the age of 19. By that time, HCTAC, under the leadership of Rochelle Trottenberg and Jamie Lee Evans, had already accomplished so much. Two sets of policy recommendations were already alive and shaking the foundation of the programs they were directed towards. Well over 100 youth-serving professionals had been trained in how to better work with young people. HCTAC had testified before the Assembly to save funding for the ILS services, not to mention the impact made upon a myriad of local system tables and its strong presence at state and national conferences. But when I came to the Youth Center Planning Summit at the invitation of my friend Chandler, who was on the board at the time, I had no idea that all was happening. All I knew was I was the only trans youth activist in the county, and I got an invite to have free food and a gas card if I shared my perspective on how a center for other system-impacted young people could be trans-inclusive. It was at that event that I mistakenly shared my email address with HCTAC staff, and they did not leave me alone until I joined the Youth Advisory Board. And I'm also grateful that they did so. And that they saw in me what few others at that time did, and convinced me that my voice had a place in this world. I was welcomed into a community of other empowered young people and was taken under the wing of mentors and leaders working to transform our youth-serving system of care. It was a community that I would desperately need. As Chandler, the other young person who invited me to join HCTAC, and two other of my queer peers died from suicide and overdose. And as a result, my mental health declined and I failed out of HSU. I was able to process my grief and survivor's guilt through dedicating my entire life to this program and helping bring the very youth center that that first event I went to was visioning. I was fortunate to be one of the very first peer coaches hired by the county when we opened the TAE Division, a one-stop shop for transition-age youth that integrated HCTAC, our Independent Living Skills Program for Foster Care, and created a TAE-specific behavioral health unit that was able to meet the unique needs of this population. In my second week of work, I was able to provide support to another young person contemplating suicide and soon began to outreach to other young people experiencing psychosis when they were taken into Semper Virens and the Crisis Stabilization Unit. Through centering youth voice and choice, HCTAC led what is now the TAE Center to be the example of how systems integration can be successful. And with the support of DHHS administration, paved the way for counties across the state to be able to hire specific peer support positions. Through developing leadership skills and providing support to others, I was able to build my own resilience. And nearly five years after failing out, went back to finish my bachelor's degree with the support of my program. And last year, I was able to graduate with my Masters of Social Work, an accomplishment I would never have dreamed of achieving when I joined HCTAC as a lost young soul. I share my story to demonstrate the impact that our county's leadership can have on the lives of young people. It was Phil Crandall's investment of Mental Health Service Act dollars and the chance, the chance that scrappy youth involved in foster care, homelessness, juvenile justice, and mental health could lead our systems to change for the better. That countless young people have been able to get the supports and skills necessary to maintain the hope and purpose necessary to persist in the face of trauma, poverty, systemization, and exploitation. While by and large our program can be understood as prevention work, there is much to be said about the efficacy of leadership and advocacy development in improving the mental health, housing stability, and vocational development of our young people. And I believe it is much more effective and less expensive intervention than the alternatives. Over the years, the TAE Center and HCTAC have only continued to expand our impact on the community and the lives of young people here and across the state and country. From passing legislation protecting the health and rights of foster youth to more than doubling our original amount of staff that provide direct service, and from training professionals on how to talk with young people about safe sex and personal hygiene, to disrupting a mental health tech summit to get investors to invest in youth-driven innovation, our youth movement has only begun and continues to grow stronger. So, please help us celebrate 16 years of momentous work at our Sweet 16 Celebration on Monday, April 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Labor Temple. The whole community is invited, but we would love to see our board members there especially. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sonia Lovey Boyd. I use she/her pronouns. I am not as familiar to many of you as the public-facing face of HCTAC, but I've been supervising this amazing program for almost seven years, doing much of the work behind the scenes, making sure staff are supported and program development moves forward. I've been with DHHS in behavioral health for 13 years. I started my journey and desire to work with transition-age youth after attending the first public gathering in 2010 to create what is now known as the TAE Division, while I was a graduate student at HSU. Later, in 2012, I attended a local Beyond the Bench held in Bayside, and I remember Barbara Leahy, DHHS former assistant director, who was a lecturer of mine in grad school, turn and ask, "What is your dream job?" I said something along the lines of working with youth like the ones that just presented. I aligned with what they were saying about engagement, inclusion, stakeholder voice, and shared power. I vividly remember Calla up there with a Palm Pilot thing, robustly dishing it to everyone attending about how to talk with young people. In the past seven years, I've gotten to walk alongside some powerful leaders. The HCTAC youth organizers and peer coach staff at TAE show up each day believing in the work they do, and that does make a difference in the lives of young people. I too believe that this work has saved lives and provided hope for a better future for many, youth and staff alike. Last week, a position opened up that a staff of mine is amply qualified for, and I asked if they were going to apply, make several dollars more. They said, "No, I'm right where I need to be, doing the work I love with the people I want to be with." A few weeks back, another TAE Division staff emailed me with praise for the work, kindness, and collaboration my team has. They said in reference to the HCTAC office, "Magic happens in there." I hold gratitude each day for getting to work alongside such an amazing team, doing magical work in our community. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your support over the 16 years and for also believing in youth voice, leadership, and advocacy.
Chair Bone, and I wanted to just take a moment to make sure that process-wise, we're following what you're expecting. So would you like speakers to wait till we're doing open comment on the consent calendar?
We've started this, we'll just go, but they're limited to there because it wasn't a full presentation. So it's not an open mic night.
It'll be three minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys letting us do things differently. That's how we like to do it in HCTAC. Hello, my name is Kelsey Reedy. I use they/them pronouns. I'm a youth organizer with the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration, and I first off want to thank you all for allowing us to do this proclamation. It means a lot to us staff and also a lot to all the young people you see in the crowd here. I've been honored to work with HCTAC for almost five years now. Can't believe it's been that long. Prior to my work with DHHS, I have worked with multiple other youth-serving organizations such as the Big Brothers Big Sisters, big shout out to Florence, who got a recognition a couple months ago. And I also worked for Teen Court, which is part of the Boys and Girls Club. So some of you also know me from my activist and community engagement years. I've done things such as supporting the community-wide sanctuary ordinance, the removal of McKinley statue, and supporting, solving the murder of Justice for Josiah Lawson. I mention these past projects because they're really important to me, and I have been honored to be able to continue some of this work when I work with HCTAC and the young people. With my specialty as a youth organizer being in policy and advocacy, I've worked with some of you all to make some big changes. I know the first year that I was here, I met with Steve Madrone and Dahlia here, who was a Youth Advocacy Board member, and shared our concerns around our county celebrating Columbus Day and how impactful, how negatively impactful that was for community members, specifically Indigenous community members. And Madrone not only heard our voices and engaged in really vital conversation, but followed through and helped us to make that change. And so now, we as a county celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day, and that was huge. So for the last couple of years, I've been working on the policy recommendations that these young people created around Two-Spirit and LGBTQIA young people. So this is across systems, and so this is, you know, work that is open to the community. So if anyone is interested in being part of implementing those recommendations, we would love that. And I just want to say that we appreciate all y'all's support, and we're going to need it in the next year, especially with the passing of Proposition 1, since all of our funding comes from the Mental Health Services Act, and we are very worried about our specific preventative services continuing to be covered. So we hope that we continue to have you guys' support. Thanks.
No applause, please. Thank you. I don't want to...
Thank you Board of Supervisors for your time and energy and dedication to allowing us to voice to you what it tangibly looks like to have HCTAC create change in our community. My name is Dahlia Cortez Garcia. I'm an old growth of the YAB, which means I've aged out of the YAB, and I am now a functioning adult of our society because of this program. I have lived experience in behavioral health and institutionalization, the foster care system as a mother, and a parenting youth. I've been involved with TAE since 2017 with seven years of connection to HCTAC. A program element that I experienced, that I was passionate about while I was a part of HCTAC was policy advocacy and training from my time on the Youth Advisory Board. I became certified in trauma-informed practices and learned a variety of valuable skills like facilitating and leadership that propelled my healing and professional development. I was able to gain knowledge and support in becoming an effective advocate and better understand the power my lived experience held. I was able to become self-efficient and self-actualized due to the holistic support I received while being a part of HCTAC. I went from being in constant crisis to being able to use the tools I gained while on the Youth Advisory Board and apply them into my life to become a functioning adult I am today. I showed up to the YAB with no sense of direction and left feeling confident in my ability to fulfill my purpose and calling in life. The drastic difference that we can see here in Humboldt County because of the implementation of programs like HCTAC is that local people like me from Fortuna that have served and lived in the community of the lack of resources in rural Humboldt County is that they make these resources accessible to youth who otherwise would be left without them. And I think that it's important that Humboldt County keeps supporting programs like HCTAC to support youth that are marginalized and that are underserved in our communities. They've greatly impacted my life in a very tangible way. And if it weren't for this program, I would still be left without a sense of direction. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sayona McNaughton. I have been a client of HCTAC since I was 16 years old, and I am 22 now. I am now also a member of the Youth Advocacy Board. As a client, I have received help beyond words. At HCTAC, they provide peer coaches that help assist you in your life goals. These peer coaches are nonjudgmental and stay in contact with clients on a consistent basis. They help provide resources, whether it's in getting a job, going to college, or finding housing. HCTAC peers, coaches staying connected with community resources and organizations. They provide youth with other information about organizations that can help in the youth's life, such as the Raven Project, YSB, and many others. They advocate for the youth in times of absolute need and have determination to never quit. They provide a consistency that most youth have not had their whole lives. Without HCTAC's support, I would have not found my first place. YSB's program, or HCTAC's program called the Launch Program, or the Launchpad, they assist youth for a limited time with rent. In that time, it gives the youth a chance to find a job and save money so they can pay rent on their own. Providing this opportunity to the youth helps them establish confidence to succeed. I want to thank the community for recognizing the 16 years of hard work HCTAC has put out for... It has made a difference in my life and seeing all the staff continuing to make a difference and present in the future of many youth's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm David, living in Arcata. Grateful to be here to celebrate HCTAC's Sweet 16 anniversary because HCTAC saved me in a lot of ways. When I was down and out, when I had to ration my food at the village, Betty Chin's Village, when I had to have some way to help people and find camaraderie and community when I was lost, they helped me find the way. Although I had help from a lot of other organizations in the area, HCTAC was the one that gave me a purpose. Gave me the drive to keep going. Sorry. Trying not to cry. Every meal and snack I had, every Youth Advocacy Board meeting, every community event and training and trip that I was a part of, they all strengthened my resolve to serve the young people out there who haven't been as fortunate and supported as I have. Every time I sat down to figure out my three main goals at Betty's Village, the things I needed to work towards so that I could leave and have a stable life, I wrote, "One, get a job. Two, find housing. And three, continue with the YAB." The YAB was what kept me going. Sure, the prospect of having my own place was motivating too, but I had the YAB right then. And place of my own was still just an idea at the time. And although I didn't have a job, HCTAC was paying me monthly for my advocacy work and the time I spent getting trained. My circumstances were decent compared to living on the streets, but still tough enough to push me to my limits. Despite having to take showers, a 15-minute walk away from my spot at the village, sometimes through the rain and the wind, the YAB kept me going. I had to wash up before meetings. Despite being so sick at one point that I was going through whole paper towel rolls in a day, blowing my nose constantly, the YAB kept me going. I was able to do committee meetings online still. I was lucky enough to have, to have had a data plan on my smartphone, so I did meetings on my phone at the village. Despite having to survive on ramen so often that I think of the village every time I eat it now, the YAB kept me going. The food at the YAB meetings was always great, healthy, nutritious, and indeed, it was delicious. Shout out to Callan and the rest of the staff who are amazing cooks. I have a lot more written here that I can't get to at the moment, but, long story short, I'm a part of the Triple HC Exec Committee now. I got to go to Washington DC to advocate for youth experiencing homelessness and...
That's it. Thank you though, very much. Sing? No?
My name is Joseph Wentz. I use he/him pronouns and am a member of the HCTAC's Youth Advocacy Board. I want to highlight that the drop-in space at HCTAC is a great place for youth to gather, build community, and have fun. I think TAE drop-in is a great place for youth 16 to 26 years of age to get together, hang out with others their age, or to hang out with the TAE staff. There are various workshops for various things that are very fun, in my opinion. One of them, Connected Crafting, happens every Wednesday. It is a space you can be creative in whatever way you choose, whether that is drawing or making creations out of beads, string, pipe cleaners, or other arts and crafts materials. It makes me happy being able to spend time with my peers and supportive staff. A place where I can let go and not have worries about what may or may not be going on in the outside world. Thank you so much for your support of our program.
Hello, my name is Jo. I'm 17 and have been a member of the Youth Advocacy Board for a little over six months. I'm a current foster youth and an interdivergent with social communication difficulties. Due to these factors, I often struggle to find a welcoming and understanding community. Since my introduction to TAE during Wellness Week last year, I have discovered not only respectful, understanding, and welcoming community, but a community that encourages growth. The staff are patient and willing to understand you as a person, quirks and all. From this understanding comes a kind and shame-free approach. The staff will support you with anything you need, even if this means spending 20 minutes explaining to you how and why what you said was upsetting to another person. I have never been told it's just common sense when asking for support on this. Instead, they welcome and encourage my questions, proceeding to work with me until I understand the other perspective and how to move forward. Thanks to this kind, loving, and respectful TAE atmosphere, I not only feel comfortable attending TAE events, but also encouraging my fellow neurodivergent and socially awkward friends to come experience this community space. Thank you for supporting this space.
Hi, good morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Alex Childers. I am 24 years old. I've been involved with the Transition Age Youth Division, or TAE, since 2016. I became a Youth Advocacy Board Member in 2020 at the age of 20, and I was hired as a peer coach at TAE last year at the age of 23. I have also experienced homelessness, foster care, and behavioral health services. HCTAC created the TAE Division, where from the age of 16, I participated in foster care and behavioral health services that helped me transition to adulthood. When I joined the Youth Advocacy Board at age 20, I participated in HCTAC's youth development programming, such as leadership training, wellness planning, and one-on-one preparation for community meetings. That programming built up my confidence, skills, and ability to value my own voice to the point that I'm now able to hold a full-time job as a peer provider without burning out. As a result of HCTAC's youth development, I've also been able to engage in policy and advocacy work. HCTAC has supported me to serve as a board member of the Sora Leaf Healing Center since 2021, where I engage both my own lived experience and other young people's expertise to shape crisis residential treatment services for local youth ages 7 to 18 experiencing crisis, youth who are going through what I went through once. HCTAC also supported me and another former foster youth to go to Sacramento to work on the Common Core curriculum used to train child welfare social workers in the state of California. And because of our presence there, the curriculum now specifies that former foster youth and others with lived experience will explicitly and intentionally be part of designing, revising, training, and evaluating the curriculum that is used to train the social workers who will serve the next foster youth. HCTAC's work has created change in every level at which youth exist, on a personal level, in local systems, in our community, and at state and national levels. We young people won't be young forever. Some... Someday, we're going to be this world's leaders, and I'm so grateful for HCTC doing a fantastic job of preparing us to lead the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucius Arnold. I am a member of the Youth Advocacy Board and have been for four years. I came into HCTC with a background of homelessness, surviving domestic violence, behavioral health challenges, and mental and physical disability. It is due to my lived experience, I wanted to emphasize just how essential it has been for me to be working with HCTC and the TAY Center. I started my journey with TAY as a minor, working over Zoom with local boards such as the Behavioral Health Board and Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission. I was quiet at first, but being able to work with the staff members like Calla Pelte Olsen, Alex Childers, Sonya Levy Boyd, Kelsey Reedy, Rosemary Schultz, and the contractor and co-founder of HCTC, Jamie Lee Evans, I was able to understand the value of the work we do and the importance of being able to support my community. Being a part of HCTC meant the staff were able to look at a homeless and mentally struggling youth and reassure me, "You have something to offer the world." I took that support and realized it was okay for me to take up space at these meetings, including meetings like this one. Going forward, I've had the opportunity to travel to conferences and attend them virtually, build curriculum, present and develop trainings, and become an advocate for youth voice and lived experience. In doing this, I realized I had the desire to attend college, which I had previously thought impossible. I didn't come to that conclusion on my own, however, and if it weren't for my mental health clinician at TAY, I wouldn't have been able to be a part of many of the opportunities myself and others are speaking of here today. Finding mental health care is exceptionally difficult, but thankfully, the TAY Center has therapy, case management, and peer coaching services, and having all of them in the same place has made building community a lot easier for me. Overall, HCTC and the TAY Center have guided me in a direction that made sure I had a path forward in life that I was passionate about. Going from having no friends, no family, supporting myself as a minor, and dealing with the pandemic, HCTC sought purpose and a passion for helping others and being heard through my voice. And it's through HCTC and the Youth Advocacy Board that I've been able to make that a reality. So, thank you, HCTC, for all the amazing work you have done and will continue to do.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Schultz. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I am a youth organizer with HCTC. I've been with this amazing program since August 2019, coming up on five years in this role. I am a sixth-generation Humboldt County native and a part of the Wailaki and Matul Tribes. I have the unique experience of once being a transition age youth in Humboldt County, and this special understanding has helped guide my work in this collaboration. Prior to HCTC, I also worked with young people through two local social service agencies. Through my position, I have the privilege of working with our Transition Age Youth Youth Advocacy Board members in the creation and implementation of individual wellness and leadership plans. This is a space to brainstorm what the youth do for their wellness, what goals they would like to pursue, who's in their support team to reach these goals, and get to know more about their systems, lived experience, for their leadership and advocacy. My very first week at the TAY Center was during Wellness Week, an incredible program with a week of activities and workshops put on by our young people, focusing on SAMSA's eight dimensions of wellness: emotional, physical, occupational, social, spiritual, intellectual, environmental, and financial. I couldn't have asked for a better first week and introduction to the Transition Age Youth in my team. I remember I chopped a lot of onions that week. We offer free hygiene supplies, nutritious foods, and wellness-oriented prizes at no cost to our participants. I have seen firsthand how our ethics for sustaining wellness and meeting youth where they are has led our young people to flourish. If they are able to show up for themselves, they're able to show up for others and create a healthier community. I am proud to say that I am now in the second year of being the lead organizer of Wellness Week and have already begun collaborating with our youth for this year's programming. So, this year, it's going to be July 22nd to the 26th, and I'd like to cordially invite all of you to attend our kickoff and/or closing barbecue. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leah Lamatina, and I am the Director of Foster and Homeless Youth Education Services for the Humboldt County Office of Education, and I'm honored to celebrate today the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaboration and its remarkable contributions to our community over the past 16 years. My journey with HCTC began early in its tenure, when as a case manager for youth experiencing homelessness, I attended one of their training sessions. It was a transformative experience, being trained by young people themselves. This unique approach allowed participants to directly learn from the lived experiences of young individuals. HCTC was groundbreaking in this regard, setting a precedent for incorporating youth voices and perspectives into decision-making processes within the services that impact their lives. It is great to see years later that the recognition of the importance of including individuals with lived experiences experts has become commonplace. However, HCTC's youth development model remains a standard for authentic engagement. Its transformative work has not only informed numerous services, but also has championed the essential role of community and belonging for young people in Humboldt County. For many underserved and unsupported youth, HCTC serves as a protective factor, a safe haven, where they can thrive and realize their full potential. The sense of community fostered by this organization has cultivated a generation of young individuals who proudly call Humboldt their home and continue to contribute positively to our community. I extend my deepest gratitude to the DHHS leadership and to the Board of Supervisors for their unwavering support of HCTC. As a community, let us continue to champion initiatives that empower youth, promote inclusivity, and foster a sense of belonging for all members of our community. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Royal?
I couldn't say it any better than they did. That was phenomenal. Thank you. I wasn't expecting such an outpouring of participation in this, but I'm grateful that you were here. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, guys, very much. And we'll move on to... The next one is... We're going to skip the next one because she doesn't want any fanfare, but we did lose our clerk of the board last week to retirement. Congratulations. I put the gap in there. Trust me, I put the gap in there. I knew what I was doing. Anyway, thanks, Kathy. And now, I'd like to bring up Coach Tomlin and the 2024 Girls State Champions. We've been bringing up the teams. We brought up the Ferndale Football Team. We brought up the St. Berners Team, baseball and football. We brought up the Fortuna Team, because this is another way we can recognize our youth doing some great things up here in little Humboldt County. These kids right here went down to Golden One, played a team that has an enrollment of over 2,000, and I mean, they've got a huge enrollment of 293, and stepped up and did what they did best. I got to see three of the games, and I didn't get to go to Sacramento. I told them I went to a casino and watched it. But it was... It's a pretty big deal, what you guys have done. You guys are going to have friendships forever. I mean, they went 30-5 for the year, and Supervisor Wilson, I'm sure, is proud because they squeaked out a win against Arcata, against Arcata, but for the Division Four, for the North State, and it comes down to two local teams. So, that means... I mean, that's a big, big deal, because there's... I don't know how many teams there are in that division, but it's quite big. So, it was a great game, standing room only, probably pretty lucky the fire marshal wasn't invited to that game either, but it had the CR Stadium completely packed, and they came through. They made it exciting, anyway. So, Coach Tomlin, do you want to come up and say a couple of things?
Yeah, first, I want to thank you, Supervisor Bone, and the Board of Supervisors for your amazing support of all the youth in Humboldt County. And echoing what Rex said, I want to congratulate all the girls' basketball teams in Humboldt County, because female athletics was at an all-time high this basketball season, from South Fork High School to Hoopod at Del Norte and everybody in between. All nine high schools made the playoffs, and so shout out to all the girls' athletes in Humboldt County. And then, I just can't say enough about this group of girls behind me. 30-5 record, first state championship in basketball in Humboldt County history, and memories of a lifetime. And not only that, they're amazing student athletes. They get it done in the classroom. They give back to the community, and they excelled on the basketball court, and I couldn't be prouder of this group of girls. So, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your continued support of local student athletes. Thank you.
And Matt, you said it best in an article, but could you introduce your associate coaches or co-coaches, because they carried a lot of the weight, I know.
Absolutely. They made me look good all the time, so...
That's a big job.
That's a big job. So, my assistant coaches are... I have a pair of sisters, Sarah and Martha Shanahan, who both played Division One basketball at the University of Pacific, and then DJ Snowden, hiding back here in the back, and was a NorCal champion when playing basketball at St. Bern's. And so, it's a great coaching staff, and like we say at St. Bern's, one family. Nobody can do it by themselves. You do it as a group, and so I'm proud of all of them.
Well, I saw a few interviews by the kids down in Sacramento, and they all thanked their teammates, the one family, and everything else. Nobody said, "Yeah, I did really good," even though they did really, really good. So, I need... But I do need to do something real quick, because I said I'd do this. I need Jocelyn... Sorry, Jocelyn, I'm picking you up. Samantha, would you guys wave to the camera, because Uncle Ryan's watching, and he was really, really proud of you guys. He texted me and said he was going to watch, and I know he got a game in, and he was texting me during the games, because he spent an ordinary amount of time at work in the break room during your games, watching you online, so... And he was a little bit of a baller himself, so... Anyway, I know you guys got to get back to school, but I think as a county, you guys put us on the map, much as Ferndale. You know, we used to be little Humboldt County, little, you know, up here, we'll throw Del Norte in there, too, but I mean, up here behind the red curtain. But our athletics are making a name for themselves. Our women's athletics, I mean, how many of you girls watched the NCAAs last night? That's it? That's so much fun? It's so much fun watching all these new... I mean, a couple freshmen popping up, going to take Clark's place and stuff like that, but good stuff. And the big thing is, is I know St. Berners and all the thing is, and this is 27%, and this isn't a big deal up in Humboldt, but throughout the state, 27% higher graduation rate with kids that are involved in after-school programs. Now, that's not just athletics. That can be band, that can be drama, or anything else. And I always wonder, that's the one program we shouldn't cut, because when you can increase your graduation rate by 27% because they're involved in after-school programs, because you have to hit a certain level of academics, so... It was so hard to make that 2.0 back in the day.
Yeah, we can clap. Congratulations, girls and coaches.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you, guys. Nice job.
Through the chair, I just wanted to comment. It's really great to see youth achieving in all different ways.
Different aspects, you bet.
So awesome.
Yeah, that was a... This is American Red Cross Month, and... Hey. And I know we've all seen the benefits when we're out working the lines of the... At the fires, floods, and everything else set up at the numerous fairgrounds, and up at the Veterans Hall up in Willa Creek, and kind of all over the county when there's a time of need. And they're also a great resource for motel rooms, which we found out very well during the fires. So, I'll read this proclamation in. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassionate people in Humboldt County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviate suffering. And whereas kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need, through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a lifesaving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's supplying shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. Whereas, we hereby recognize the month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to strengthen our community. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all residents of Humboldt County to reach out and support... I thought you fell out of your chair. To reach out and support a humanitarian mission.
You get your exercise, right?
Yeah, I guess you do. I'll get my steps in.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Lee, and I am one of 32 Red Cross volunteers in Humboldt County. All the work the Red Cross does in our county is managed by those volunteers and only one paid staff person. Most of the time, people think of Red Cross as operating shelters, and certainly, we set up and staff the shelters during the earthquakes and also during fires, but there's a lot of additional work that our volunteers do. We have a disaster action team, which responds to individual household fires, floods, and landslides, and provides financial assistance, healthcare interventions, and mental health interventions. We have a program to install free smoke alarms and have campaigns to do that at no cost to the homeowners, and there are programs for elementary school, high school, and communities to help prepare for disasters. There's a whole variety of things that people can do if they volunteer for the Red Cross, and we're always very, very happy to have additional people volunteer. If anyone is interested, we have volunteers of all ages and all different types of skills. And to that end, I've left some flyers at the back if anyone is interested. But thank you very much for recognizing the work of Red Cross in our county, and we look forward to helping you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to say thank you to the Red Cross during the earthquakes. It was pivotal, the help that you gave with the shelter, also not just with the earthquakes, but we've had several landslides that have happened in the southern Humboldt area, and you were able to provide shelter for displaced families, and just the continued work that the Red Cross does. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thanks. Let's see. And then, we've got certificates of recognition for the SROPTIMists, and I don't know if there's anybody here. There's nobody here from SROPT... don't know if there's anybody here, there's nobody here from SROPTIMists, but they were delivered last week to the recipients and, and very worthy. If you want to see the names, you can go on the website. And then we'll go to National Public Health Week proclamation. Look at them all come up. The Dream Team. It's a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors. Whereas this year, National Public Health Week is the week of April 1st to the 7th, 2024. And this year's theme is protecting, connecting and thriving. We are all public health. And whereas the goal of this year's National Public Health Week is recognizing the contributions of public health and improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas this recognition also acknowledged that many community services are strengths, support our well-being. Whereas these social determinants of health include basic infrastructure, arts, culture, housing, education, access to food and health, healthcare and much more. Whereas priorities in 2022 to 2027, Humboldt County Community Health Improvement Plans include housing insecurity and homelessness, behavioral health, suicide prevention, substance abuse, healthy beginnings and adverse childhood experiences. Whereas many organizations have joined together to support the Live Well Humboldt Initiative to better understand related data and the unfair differences experienced by disadvantaged communities and their root causes. Whereas Live Well Humboldt depends on the efforts, many health improvement coalitions focused on a range of strategies from creating safe environments by reducing access to legal, by lethal means, to empowering people to reach out for help when they need it, to advocating for policies to end housing instability and increasing protective factors for young people. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes the week of April 1st to 7th, 2024 is National Public Health Week and encourages everyone, including health professionals, students, elected leaders, activists and the public to step in and do what they can to make our world a more equitable, safe, healthy and just place. Eha. I'd like to be in a bookie on this one.
Look happy, look flighty.
Oh, too late.
Screw that up. We're gonna have to go to an acceptance, saying, here, you did this enough, come on now.
Can you turn this way? Sorry, I got your left.
Okay, you got another chance.
I can redeem myself and hold the other end.
Cause you're receiving it.
Yes. See? Not better.
Here you go, Doc.
Thank you.
You don't know, you could, oh, you can hold in, I'll, I'll talk. Teamwork.
Well, thank you Chair Bone and your board for recognizing Public Health Week. As this year's Public Health Week is focused on, we are all public health. I even think the other proclamations, the recognition that you gave both to the St. Bernard's basketball team, to HC Tacy, these are all examples of, you know, protective factors, supporting our youth. That is all a part of public health. And our public health branch is comprised of our Division of Environmental Health, our Nursing Division, our Healthy Communities and WIC Division, our Public Health Lab and many other programs that work to improve and protect the health of our community. I'm joined here by our Health Officer, Dr. Candy Stockton, our Deputy Director, Laura Weiss, and our Assistant Director for Department of Health and Human Services, Michelle Stevens, who also serves as the Vice President of the County Health Executives Association of California. And so we're all here to represent our public health branch, but also want to recognize the work that we do as a public health branch is not alone. We do it in partnership with others and Live Well Humboldt is a great example of that collective impact work that we're building in the community. And just wanted to remind folks, if they're interested in learning more about the story of our health, to go to livewellhumboldt.org where we have our community health dashboard that we launched last year. And so just really want to express our appreciation on behalf of our branch to the board for your support in supporting public health as well. Thank you.
Nobody else?
They voted me.
Nice job, nice job in accepting that award. Okay, I'll bring it now to public comment on the consent calendar.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, our esteemed members of the board. My name is Vernon Price. I'd like to speak on item number 16 and item number 21 on today's agenda. Item number 16, I'd like to just say thank you to all of those behind the scenes, Robert Ward, Mr. Aaron and others that are constantly working to make these grants possible for our unhoused community. Item number 21, the transitional housing program recently getting $219,780 of round five. I'd like to also thank Travis Green for being a part of this, of both of these contracts and just say thank you all again for all of your hard work for those that are unhoused. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar. Minus the one item pulled, 32.
Any other comment? Nikki?
Thank you Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
And now I'll bring it to items pulled from consent, number 32. Who pulled that?
Supervisor Madron pulled this item.
Okay, Supervisor Madron, do you want to comment, please?
Yeah, sure. As, as has been the case in the last several meetings where exceptions to the hiring freeze have been requested, I've asked this to be pulled for discussion. I think it's important. And I recognize that these are actually funded positions in our existing budget, but that budget is $17 million in the hole. And so I just, I, I'm concerned that if we keep doing these exceptions, we're hiring people that within a year or two, we're going to be having to let go because we know the budget is still very dire for the next several years. Sales tax are not going up and I assume that's a lot because of increased costs of PGNB bills, food, gas and everything else. So people simply aren't buying things and that doesn't look any prettier for the next couple of years. So out of a concern for hiring and then having to let people go, which is the most horrible thing to do, I've asked her to be pulled for a discussion and I know the sheriff will have some good discussion in regards to why this is on here and the rest of it. So it's that simple, so nothing personal.
Not, nothing personal taken from this. So this is part of the, the process and I don't have any problem coming to the board and advocating for these positions because they are very, very important and vital. I'm glad you mentioned that these are funded positions. This isn't costing the county anymore by approving these three positions. The three positions are essentially a finance position, admin analyst for our business office. And recently this, your board approved an ASO position and that ASO coupled with this admin analyst are going to be primarily assigned to grants. And this is something that's mandated by the, by the board and also very encouraged by the CAO and also the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. We need to start looking for money outside the county to fund positions and projects and equipment that the current general fund pays for. And it's going to be very vital for us to continue in these operations in the future by having these, these positions in place to apply for these grants. At this point in time, the sheriff's office has millions of dollars worth of grants. There's other, there's money left on the table because we don't have the bandwidth to go after any more grants because of, of all of the time it takes to manage these grants. As you know Supervisor Madron, you've applied for and supervised grants in the past, they are very, very time intensive. And, and as a county, we're talking about hiring outside personnel and, and internal personnel to assist with grants for other departments. So what I'm doing is I'm taking that very personal and, and as far as responsibility goes to try and, and, and create a civilian staff that can, can go after grants, to leverage more money so we can actually not dip into the general fund if we don't necessarily have to in the future. So that's the admin analyst portion. The other two positions are, are, are community service officer positions. These were originally under, you know, Measure Z and, you know, these are again funded positions. This, the community service officer positions are again vital. When we're talking about deputy sheriff positions that are currently not staffed, are not funded, we have 15 of them. Community service officers actually are going out in the field during day shift hours and they are, they're taking cold cases essentially. These are, these are thefts, vandalisms, burglaries that don't have like suspects on scene and it takes the place of a deputy sheriff to go out there and, and to, to properly investigate these crimes. They also are there to provide neighborhood watch type information, how to better secure your home, crime prevention techniques, to go into our schools and, and teach drug education and, and personal safety and also just be our community advocates. And again, they take the place of a deputy sheriff because our deputy sheriffs are running from one part of the county to the other. And oftentimes we don't have time to give to some of these vital, vital cases. When you are victimized in our county, I, I don't want to refer people to a phone call. I don't want to refer people to a website. I want people to, I want our deputies and our community service officers to respond and to be able to have those face-to-face conversations with the people that are victimized. So they know that the county is there, that we're empathetic and that we can do everything possible to try and solve the, the crime that, that was perpetrated against them. And then also if we can't, but at least offer them that, that we are going to properly document these things so they have a, a copy for their insurance and also give them some advice about how they cannot be victims in the future. So again, these are vital, you know, to the sheriff's office and our mission and really what the county should be doing. And again, we're, I think these, this is good, this is a, a good bang for the buck, so to speak. This, again, already budgeted positions, this is $150,000 this next fiscal year. These are, again, positions, all three of these are going to be in next year's budget. This is not something that, that's not going to be in there. We are, we are advocating for these positions and, and again, these are one of those positions as well that we're going to continuously try and hire these people. When community service officer, it's not the highest paid position and oftentimes it's a, a step into the public safety career choice. And so we have a current CSO that's going to be in the academy in a, in a month. And another CSO that we have can, is looking to, to go into full-time law enforcement. So I will potentially be back for more positions, you know, in the future. But again, these are, these are also key. Another thing I want to point out is one of the things that, that plagues every, every district in our county is abandoned vehicles. And our, our CSOs are the ones that are handing, handling the abandoned vehicle situation and also neighborhood complaints like Victor Drive and, you know, and those kind of things. They're out there dealing with, with angry neighbors and trying to solve some of these community problems. And, and so these, again, vital and, and I hope you approve it today.
I'm just gonna let you, yeah, do you have something? Okay. Okay, I'll take public comment on this item. Seeing none. Thank you, sure. Sure. Supervisor Madron?
Well, thank you Sheriff for being here today and explaining your perspective on these and you're actually singing my tune very well when you talk about how we have to spend money to make money. And that's absolutely true in the grant world that, you know, there's, there's money spent and we get what we get for that money. And then there's money spent that helps leverage additional resources and I appreciate that element of it and I recognize all these positions are important. It's just we're in a, we're in a tough position and it's not going to end anytime soon, but I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate, I mean, we've, at some, some nights, Eureka has more officers involved on duty than we have for the rest of the county and they're 14 and a half square miles and we get the, a good balance of the other 300, 3,860 square miles. So when he talks about bouncing from one place to the other, we have guys running all over. And the funny thing is, a lot of times when I'm driving down Broadway or anything else, I'll see an EPD car pulling over someone and one of the sheriffs will be pulled over behind them to make sure there's no problem until another EPD gets there. Our sheriffs don't have that alternative because they don't have an EPD car driving by them. So I mean, they work really well together when they can, so. It's, the, the grant positions are important. I've never written grants, you know, it's never been my job, but I've written grants for like Redwood Fields and things like that for nonprofits that I've worked for, volunteered for, so. And to manage them is a big part of it, that we always find that out. You have, I still get calls from a couple of them, seeing what I'm doing, so. I appreciate that, so. I'm good with it. Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment before the motion, if that's okay. I, so I appreciate the focus on grant funding and I also, you know, I think we've had prior conversations about CSOs, community services officers and how they can take on some duties that, you know, reduce the workload for our sworn officers as well as, you know, frankly, they're a lower cost to the organization and do important duties, so. I'm okay with moving forward with these, but I do want to say, you know, our board has not had, our full board hasn't had the presentation of our projected shortfall in the general fund that we're facing in '26, '27 or at the end of '25, '26. And that'll be coming shortly and we're also having conversations about reorganization, efficiency and any, you know, I would say we will need to see dramatic changes in the county in, you know, fiscal year '25, '26 and '26, '27 in particular, and you're aware of that and, you know, the ad hoc has been meeting with departments around this. So it is, we're going to dramatically change the way we do work and particularly in general fund, primarily general fund-funded departments. And that is no reflection on the value of that work that those departments do or the importance of it. So I think, you know, we've had conversations about what that looks like and what the implications are for filling more unfilled positions and, you know, so I, I will say, you're aware, the ad hoc is aware, the whole board is aware, but I think we're going to get a more nuanced and detailed information about that soon. So we are, you know, filling positions at the risk of potential layoffs in the future if we can't find enough savings or generate enough revenue to fill those gaps. And so I, I want to be fully transparent about that as we move forward with this and I see the value of what you're expressing here and, you know, potential savings and efficiencies that these positions could realize, so. You know, I think we just all have to go into it eyes wide open and I think we always, you know, recognize that we have fiscal responsibilities, but I don't think, I don't think we've been quite in this position in a really long time. And we're going to have a pretty tough conversation ahead with budget. So all that said, I hear the rationale for these and, you know, it just weighs heavily on, on me, as you know, I've, you know, going through these ad hoc meetings, it is a painful process and it's gonna, it's gonna get a little worse before it gets better. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks.
Chair Bone, sorry. I'm just gonna pick out just a small piece of this, which is the part about grant writing and, and I want to make, at some point, I would like it if we are, and I support positions that generally in the concept of doing that, whether they bring us positions that generally in the concept of doing that, whether they bring us funding for programmatic things or whether they're capital funding. But it, I think at some point we need some analysis of those positions and what they're actually producing for us in revenue. Cause we, cause we'll, cause we could, every, I believe every department could find a grant, you know, could promote having a grant writer, assuming that there's a flow of funding. And, and when we come to this board and talk about these things, it would be great if we could even refer to the specific programs that we feel like we're deficient on accessing funds for. Not going to do that today, just kind of putting out this not just to you, but to staff in general, that I think that we need to, we need to reference that. Because just saying there's just money out there is different than saying, well, there's these funding sources and they're coming in in these years and we expect, you know, in order to be eligible for these things, we need some firepower to get to that place. And then likewise on the backside, it would be great if, if within the year or so, we could have some sort of report back from our different departments who have specific titles that are specific to doing grant writing. What's, what's our, what's our performance value on that? Cause I've heard also, it's interesting, because sometimes we get criticism, we put out there, you know, hey, this position will bring in money and then other, well, it's tight, maybe we don't need that. So I just want to be careful about that. And then also, you know, how this impacts our peers in the future, I think is important. We, you know, every time we hire someone, even for a little while, we have a long, long-term impact, financial impact that we need to consider in this. Those are the things I'm concerned about, I'm willing to move forward with this, but I concur with Supervisor Arroyo that we're going to have some tough conversations coming forward, so. I'm hearing it from departments already, so.
I had somebody comment the other day, this is where we're going to find out exactly what is nice and what we need. And we're going to have to barrel down to what we need. We have a lot of programs that feel really good and do, and do good work. But do they, do they continue what the county is going to need during this tough times and bring them back on afterwards? Because cutting programs, we need public safety, health, things like that. Feel goods won't fill that, and I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be the tough call that we're all going to have to make. All right, it's been moved and seconded?
No.
No? Sorry.
Can I have a comment, please?
Sure, oh, you bet.
So I also am part of the budget ad hoc and we had this discussion with your department already and had that conversation about what layoffs may look like in the future. And I want to recognize also that, you know, with the information that you gave us all, the hiring process for the sheriff's department is a little bit more complicated than the hiring process just for a department that doesn't have to do backgrounds and so, so forth and so on. And recognizing that this, these two positions are budgeted for and that you've already absorbed that 10% cut to the salary and benefits with a 10% vacancy rate. And so I know that this weighs heavy on you with your department being the biggest funded department out of the general fund. And so you, your department is looking at probably the biggest cuts in the future. And I know that you recognize that and are going to help our board adjust as we need to. And it's difficult and you recognize that as well in your department, in our budget ad hocks. We all as an organization are going to have, you know, some tougher times in the future and we're all responsible for that. And so thank you for your honest conversation that you did have with our ad hoc and looking into the future and coming away from that meeting knowing that you may be laying off staff. And that impacts our county and our county departments and our county constituents. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve an acceptance of the hiring freeze for three-point FTEs for fiscal year '23 and '24.
Is our second?
I'll second. And I'll just say we are looking to the, one more comment on that, is that we are looking to the directors of each department to make those prioritization decisions and that is, that is you. So, you know, we are saying, yep, fill these budgeted positions and, you know, we're, we're asking everyone to bear the responsibility of making those structural changes in the next couple of years. Thank you, and I'm ready to move forward.
All right.
Ready for roll call?
Yep.
Thank you Supervisor Madron.
No.
Supervisor, sorry Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries for one.
Thank you.
So go right into public hearings, it looks like. No? Oh, I'm sorry, I always skip that, sorry. Item's not on the agenda? Excuse me.
Yes, good morning and thank you for the recognition that you always forget that. My name is James Chaffee. I'm sorry that I missed your last meeting of March 12th. I've reached an age where sometimes there are just medical issues that comes with the territory.
I remembered it last, the last meeting. I remembered at the last meeting when you weren't here, I just want you to be aware of that.
Oh, okay. You missed me, that's good. Two meetings before that, on February 6th, your chair Rex Bone made a clumsy attempt to embarrass me. I hope you remember that. It's not in the minutes. At that time, one of the things he said was that you don't get a lot of applications for appointments to the Law Library Board of Trustees. I hope you remember that. It's not in the minutes either. In point of fact, you must not get any. There is a California state statute, government code 54972. It's easy to find, it's in the local agency section right after the open meetings law. And it says, and I quote, "On or before December 31 of each year, each legislative body shall prepare an appointments list of all regular and ongoing boards, commissions and committees which are appointed by the legislative body of the local agency. This list shall be known as the local appointments list." I added the word emphasis "all" myself. You took formal action to do that on December 5th, but it did not include the appointments to the Law Library Board of Trustees. Then on January 9 of this year, you made three appointments to the Law Library Board of Trustees, again without them ever appearing on the local appointments list. Does your staff accept appointments that are not on the appointments list? Of course not, they're not there because you don't want applications. Not only did I bring that to the attention of this board three times before Rex Bone said that, I brought it to your attention twice before you did it. If you are attempting to establish the fact that you don't pay attention to public comment, you have a lot of credibility. The trouble is that the essence of democracy is that the citizens have a voice in their government and the essential fact, factor in that is that their representatives in the government have ears to hear them. The state of California not only has laws about making citizens aware of public appointments, it has laws about open government and citizens being able to attend those meetings so that they may be heard. Those like laws are designed to create the conditions of democracy. None of that works if you're just not listening and you've made it very clear that in fact you are just not listening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no one else? Bring it back and open the public hearings. And for my, go ahead. Open the public hearing, Director Ford?
Planning and Building Department?
First time here.
To present the request for a revocation of a conditional use permit for 5,000 square feet of outdoor and 7,600 square feet of mixed-bike cultivation, the property's out on Highway 36. We, I, I hate to bring this forward, but we're concerned that we have not given the applicant adequate notice that they were in danger of having their permit revoked by not responding to us. I'm not going to excuse the condition of the property or anything else, but from a due process standpoint, we want to make sure that we don't commit a due process violation while doing something that could be considered the right thing. So the, we would either ask that the board continue this indefinitely or continue it to a date certain to allow us to make sure that due process is observed and that would give us the opportunity then to make sure the applicant fully understands the ramifications of not following through.
Thank you for that. And then why we're re-noticing they can make improvements on the property is what they will have to actually do, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I've got a question on the revocations. We're having them come forward and we're having the discussions, we're going to end up with a thousand pieces of property that are worthless. And I know you and I talked the other day that there are people out there, I've been contacted by a couple that are willing to go in and clean the properties, pay the back taxes and take them over, so no loss to the county. And maybe we might even be able to charge them a fee to do all the transfers and everything else to alleviate some of the concerns. I've just heard the, I, I see the headlines that we're going to get stuck with thousands of these and I, I think, I think we're not making any more property, I think they all still have value even with the, the cleanups. You know, the higher people we hire have to pay, as I said last week, prevailing wage, mow in, mow out and everything else. Neighbors are always willing to look at another piece of property and probably can clean it up, you know, to, to your standards. So is there a way we can, because now let's, we revoke, you know, we, we take the permit and they've already abandoned the property. But not, not these, in general, like some of the ones, they've abandoned the property, they can't make any money, they've left. So now it's just sitting there. And we have to wait five years to get rid of that piece of property through the tax rolls. Is that right?
Well, not, not entirely.
Okay.
It's got some fundamental truth, but not entirely precisely correct.
Through, through the chair, I just have a process question. We're getting into talking about programmatic.
We are?
Discussion, yeah, about, about what to do about this greater problem. And I feel like if we're going to have that discussion, we should notice that and bring it back to the board for a discussion. Cause I think it's a big enough issue to do that. Just want to be clear, we're here to talk about a revocation, so.
And I'm asking if, if there's a way we can streamline this revocation and others, because it came up at the last meeting that we're going to have hundreds and, or hundreds and hundreds of these, so.
I don't.
But I will, we, we can bring it up at another time, I just, I'd, I'd like that to be looked at so we can move these properties into tax-paying hands and alleviate some of the concerns of, of people that are saying that we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of these.
We are bringing the report, that annual report back in April and we will address this as part of that.
All right, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to discomfort you Supervisor Wilson.
I think it's a good subject, I think we should have that discussion, I'm totally down. I just want to like make sure we have it for real, yeah. And I, and I, I take partial responsibility for sort of bringing this up the last time we had this, so I will, I will take that. But.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair, I asked some questions this morning, Director Ford, and were you able to find those things out? One is if there's a state license on this property?
No state license, we've, and none of the correspondence have we identified that there's been a state license.
And how long has the current owner had this property?
The current owner is the original applicant. They changed, they changed their address along the ways, is what has confused the situation.
Well, I had an opportunity to see this property on this weekend and it's terrible. And I hope that this board could come back at a date certain, 30 days. Also, is the applicant here or online?
I don't know.
Well, it's unfortunate, but I, I just feel that, you know, other permit holders are held to a standard. This property is not, this isn't, it has looked like this for a long time. And it is right next to the highway, not that that matters, but it is in very bad shape. And I, I just don't, I guess it's the messaging or the noticing, but can we, do you want to do public comment first? Cause I would make a motion.
I would. Either way, is there any public comment? Seeing none, make your motion.
Did we open the public hearing?
Yes, yeah, he did. Could I make a motion that it come, this item comes back within 30 days and I don't have a calendar in front of me?
April 23rd?
I'll make the motion this item comes back April 23rd for revocation, if it's not cleaned up.
I'll second.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's just a, I just want to ask John, does that seem reasonable to you or would you prefer longer or is this gonna?
No, this is fine.
Okay, great, thanks.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Please.
You mentioned that the item about, the programmatic item is going to come back in April as well, is that going to be before this date?
It may actually be on the same day.
It may be the same day, all right. Sounds good, I, I think, I, I agree that that is a conversation we really need to have, thank you.
Okay.
Just for April 23rd, I think I am not here on April 23rd.
We don't have a meeting the week before, right?
Yeah, so.
We have a meeting the week before. So. Do we have a meeting on the 30th? So then it would have to go to May 7th.
So can I, can I ask something? So for revocation of the permit, there's four of us here, but the, maybe the larger discussion that Mike would like to be involved with can be moved. Is that okay Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you for the clarification.
And then on the, on the property revocation, does it need to be cleaned up, all violations 100%? Or does a, there has, or is, there has to be progress, significant progress? I'm, I'm just asking because I, I've heard this come back, so.
I think the, what I'm hearing is that if it comes back to the board, it either needs to be cleaned up or there's a likelihood that it's going to get revoked.
Perfect, that's just the clarification, that that's on the, because they're going to come back and say, well, we couldn't get a dump truck or we couldn't get, okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded?
Rex, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
Is the planning and building, or I'm sorry, is this revocation something that needs a forefist vote? Okay, okay.
No, sorry.
I was just worried if we, anytime we have anybody upset when that's needed, so, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I'm glad we're proceeding and making sure we got our i's dotted and t's crossed as far as notification, I appreciate that. And I also look forward to the larger discussion, I've also had phone calls from people out in Willow Creek, cannabis farmers and/or other nonprofits, just like Supervisor Bone was saying, that have an interest in trying to work with the county to help get these cleanups done and not put a burden on the county. So I appreciate that discussion coming back, sounds like later in April. Or May, whatever it is, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So I'm just a little confused because revocation of a permit doesn't mean that we're taking the property back. It, it, there are many properties that don't have cultivation permits on them that are in need of help. This one site is clearly not in compliance with any regulations with a cultivation permit. But, but unless they're behind on their taxes or, you know, yes, they need to clean up the garbage, but it is stimulating around the cultivation permit at this time, is that correct?
Without getting too deeply into the, the other discussion, the first step is revocation, then it goes to code enforcement.
Sure.
Then we're going to look at one of two different avenues.
Sure.
One could be the county abates, one could be that it goes to a receiver. And the receiver abates and then sells the property.
So obviously.
So, obviously you've had communication with the landowner, they reached out to you once they were, once it was posted, and.
Friday afternoon.
Okay. So, but my, my point would be more specific that, would we prioritize a site like this over a household that needs the same attention?
I would say, based upon the pictures that I've seen, this is the same as one of the junk houses that we would go out and abate.
We don't move that quickly normally, so I'm sorry, John, but I could give you pictures of code enforcement that we already have in the queue, that I would prefer that we, you know, bottom of the line, just because it's a cultivation permit and we revoke it, and then I would hope that it wouldn't jump to the top, and.
No, it, it wouldn't.
Okay.
We, we prioritize.
I'm talking about this specifically, this one.
No, I understand, but my point of clarification earlier, and we'll come up in the discussion, not get deeper weeds, we're going into a place that's getting revacated, we're finding out that they don't have any, no response, no owner, left the area, abandoned.
Not true of this permit, they reached out on Friday.
I, and that's, I think that's probably why we're out here now. We're doing, we're doing exactly what I would hope we'd do. But if they didn't reach out, and then we had to go in and clean it up, letting it sit for another five years is not going to help the situation, so. All right, it's been moved, moved and seconded, so.
Okay, perfect. Chair Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Wilson?
Oh, yeah.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson? I'm sorry.
Again.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes, and thank you to Director Ford and staff. I recognize this is, you know, was not the way you wanted it to go, but thank you for getting those questions answered for me as well.
Good morning. Sean, me and Deputy Director, Facilities Management. I will do a little presentation here at the outset. This is the public hearing for 803 Fourth Street. Ready to go when, when you guys are. All right. So just real quick overview, we're going to look at the property real quickly, we're going to talk about the process, then we're going to talk about development options.
Sean, sorry.
Sorry.
Chair, you need to open the public hearing, please.
I didn't close the last one, if we don't go into, I open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll talk about development options, we'll touch on facilities master plan compliance, and get public input. So here's the property on the left-hand side, that image. You can see the property that we are talking about today is bounded by the yellow dashed line. That is the Courthouse Union Service Station, intersection of Fourth and I Street. The property immediately to the right of that, bounded by the green box, is the County IT Building, so makes this acquisition especially strategic and valuable. On the right, we have a small street view of the existing condition and some site information. It's a little over 13,000 square feet, that's about a third of an acre. There's about a thousand-foot structure on site, it's former service station. So the process, we'll hear public input, of course. If your board approves staff recommendations, we'll execute the purchase agreement. We'll receive the City of Eureka's Conformance Review Letter. We actually already have that, they had their planning commission review on the 13th of this month. Then we will finalize the SEQA determination, staff will, and then after that, we'll return to your board for adoption of the SEQA determination and finalizing the resolution to purchase. That would be the fifth and final board meeting for this, and then after that, close escrow, make our final payments, transfer ownership. So there isn't a project that's proposed for this site at this point, it's completely a strategic opportunity. This would be some sort of municipal office facility, the footprint, height, configuration, occupancy, all unknown, could be redeveloped with the IT building next door, so that would open up a lot of additional opportunities, but could be a building, I mean, ideally, I think would probably be something in the three to five stories, 30,000 to 50,000 square feet. Any future site development, that's subject to board approval and SEQA, and we will return to the City of Eureka for their conformance review on a project. And then facilities master plan, so we adopted that in 2020, almost four years ago at this point. We'll come back and update your board on the facilities master plan in the near future, but there's two really key components of that, that this property ticks. First one is this is strategically valuable for co-locating services, so being immediately adjacent to the courthouse and IT, it's right there, we can cluster our services for efficiency. And then acquisition of property that, you know, reduces a long-term need to lease space. We have over 85 leases, a pretty big component of our facilities portfolio is leased space, and we'd really like to reduce that, give ourselves more control over our facilities future. So that concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions, assist as necessary.
Bring it back to the board.
Good morning. My name is Phyllis Coy. First of all, I wanted to thank the, for you for putting out a notice to bidders in the Time Standard on March 5th, 2024, requesting bids in order to use Measure Z 2024 funds for road repairs on the following roads. Humble Hill Road, Ridgewood Drive, New Navy Base Road, Eel River Drive, Field Brook Road, Murray Road.
Phyllis? We're, we're on the.
I know.
Wait an item.
I'm getting down to the, okay, I'll just skip right down. However, I am very concerned that you are considering the purchase of a piece of real estate in the amount of $775,000. Quoting from an article titled "Supervisors Approve New Strategic Plan That Appeared in the Time Standard on March 14, 2024," and I quote, "The county is staring down the barrel of a $12.4 million deficit, which is not projected to see sufficient improvement in the coming fiscal years. I fully understand that prime, prime pieces of real estate do not come up for sale very often, but where are the funds for this purchase coming from? Thank you for your time." Oh, and Mr. Bone, I do have a bone to pick with you.
I'll stop by the house.
Oh, no, you won't.
Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
I'm the other half of the sisters thing.
I understand that.
You guys made a comment during the meetings about what we'd like to have as opposed to what we need to have, and this, to me, is one of those things that we would like to have and that we not necessarily need to have. I don't know how much property or the expenses of the lease, of the leases that you mentioned, or the cost of building a building to accommodate the leased property into this one, but I just think that this is not a time to put the budget in to more of a hole than it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of serving on the Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee and our, this year's Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, so I wanted to bring up a response to that, and I appreciate both of your comments and the, the most recent public speaker saying that, you know, we're weighing the, getting people out of leased buildings, which we pay some pretty high costs to lease spaces, and so one of the goals of that facilities master plan, which was adopted before I was on the board, but also, you know, our current framework of looking at our facilities and considering our budget in the longer term, is really to utilize some existing financing that we have available for a short period of time to acquire and build properties so that they're county-owned, and then a lot of programs that, that have overhead costs as part of their funding streams are able to put those towards county-owned facilities as opposed to leased facilities. So, while I'm sure that property owners who have private property that they lease to us in the area are very pleased that we lease from them, long-term, I think it's best for the financial health of the county if we can acquire and maintain property that the county owns, so that's publicly owned. But it is a big upfront investment, and I can understand how it would be alarming to hear about a significant budget shortfall, and then also see that we're acquiring, you know, relatively expensive properties in our core downtown area, but that's the, that's the longer-term vision. So, in line with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we proceed with the recommendation. Do we need to read it out?
Second, and I'll speak to that second, and that this, I, I also, I thought it was a very good question that you asked. But this is a transfer of assets, essentially, we still own that, we'll still own it, so we still have the assets. So it's a very, it's different than just spending money. So I want to understand, you know, understand that, and in some cases, and many cases for property, the value may actually increase. So, it is essentially twofold. It's one way to, to have money in, in the banks, or so to speak, in terms of an investment in property, but it's, it's also allows us a lot of flexibility in the future. And unless we keep on a vision that will get us to newer and better facilities someday, because many of our facilities are in, in very bad shape and extremely old and beyond their lifespan, unless we start that now, I mean, many folks would say like, we should have done that a long time ago. Well, it doesn't matter, we, we're here now, and, and in 20 years, we'll come by very quickly, and 20 years from now, we'll be hopefully grateful that we're making these kinds of investments moving forward so that we can provide services to our community, and also provide better spaces and places for our, our employees to work as well in that. It's important. So, with that, I'm, I'm, oh, I already seconded, so we're ready to go.
Second again.
I can second it again. It's a day.
No, and I, I think you, we will find that a lot of our grants, and we talk about grants a lot, but we live by grants, over probably half our budget is grants, and a lot of them have to be shovel-ready. And you can't be shovel-ready unless you have somewhere to put the shovel. And this gives us the opportunity, when this comes, that we have somewhere to add on, add safety to our, to our people, and, and, you know, get away from cars, put them all closer, we have a campus-style atmosphere. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your public comment and your concern, and it does seem like an initial large investment, like my fellow board members have said. We've talked a lot about what the future of the organization looks like, and in June, I believe, there's a conversation coming about lightly said reorganization or efficiencies that we can have throughout the organization that can save us money in long-term, so that we can, you know, really advance on that savings to build our fund balance back up. And right now, we spend a tremendous amount of money on rents, and so when you're talking about reorganization or, you know, strategies to reduce, we initially know that there's going to have to be a monetary input or monetary contribution to, to realize those long-term savings, and so I do really thank you for your comments and, you know, and the concern and, and, but to, to, like Supervisor Wilson said, that long-term investment of savings, you have to start now, so.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Well, thank you, Sean, and also Jake, and the two-person team and our facilities management effort. At some point, I'd like if we could get a, maybe a report on an agenda item on where we're at with staffing. I know we're down two people, and I'd like to know a little bit more about that, and, you know, what is our capacity to take advantage of these properties, including the whole block we own across the street? And yesterday, we had a great meeting with, with Behavioral Health in regards to Semper Virins, and that whole block we own up there at Wood Street, and it's not on the agenda today, but I would like to request, if the board feels appropriate, in this discussion of reorganization and efficiencies, if we can kind of have an update on where we're at with staffing, where we're at on capacity, to really, what do we need to be able to take advantage of these things? I know we have an ad hoc, and that's great, but ultimately, it comes down to staffing and our ability to really do the relocations temporary and make, take advantage of these properties we own, so we can stop paying exorbitant lease monies forever on other properties. So, I look forward to discussion with the board. Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Nikki?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
With that, do we have the Workplace 2030? Is it going to take more than?
Chair Bone, we need to close the public hearing.
I'm getting there. I knew that. Close them. Do we have, I'm wondering if I, do we have time, Tom?
I think the Workplace 2030 is going to take longer than 10 minutes, so I would propose that we break and go into closed session at 11:00. We expect that that will take about an hour and a half.
We need to come back and read it in.
We would have to come back and read it in.
All right, we'll be back here at 3 minutes to 11:00, so we're ready to go at 11:00 to read this in. Alicia, you want to read it in?
Yes, sir. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It's also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Colehess versus County of Humboldt at All, Humboldt County Superior Court Case CV 2100894, Kathy Childs versus County of Humboldt at All, Case Number 1, colon, 23, dash, CV, dash, 02836, dash, RMI. County of Humboldt, excuse me, versus Kathy Childs at All, Humboldt County Superior Case Number CB 2300847, and Kristen Weiss versus County of Humboldt at All, Sacramento County Superior Case Number 24WM 000049. Finally, it's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and E1 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case.
With that, we will go into closed session immediately, and then we will have a half-hour break when we're through with closed session and come back, so we estimate to come back at 1:40.
Correct. And Chair Bone, we need to take public comment, please.
Could I have public? Could I have public comment on this item? Thank you. Thank you for the public comment.
No one in Zoom? Okay. Thank you.
And now, we will retreat to closed session.
Thank you.
and go straight to get these guys out here, get to the local emergency proclamation.
Chair, point of order?
Yes.
I need to report out on closed session first, please.
Would you report out on closed session? That's why I asked you three times. You ready?
Thank you. There was no reportable action taken with regards to Item G1, G2, and G6. With regards to Item G3 and G4, the board voted unanimously that the County of Humboldt and Ms. Childs are going to enter into a global settlement agreement, which will settle and result in the dismissal of the U.S. District Court, Northern District Court Case Number 1, colon, 2, 3, dash, CV, dash, 02836, and Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number The terms of the settlement are that the county agrees to waive all sanctions awarded against Ms. Childs in the Superior Court case and to dismiss that case in exchange Ms. Childs agrees to dismiss the district court case. The county will not pay any money to Ms. Childs per the settlement agreement. Furthermore, with regards to Item G5, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Foley and Lardner LLP for defense in the case of Kristen Weiss versus the County of Humboldt at All, Sacramento County Court Case Number
Thank you very much. Mr. Gerby. Kurt McCray. I just want to say that I know you don't have anything to do with it, Kurt.
Hi. How's it going? I just heard, I thought, I thought we had a buffer here, but you called it out of order, so thank you.
He was running.
I was, ran up the stairs. So, yes, we declared a local emergency due to the hazardous conditions there in Centerville. The people that had the knowledge here are to my left, so I'm going to turn it over to them to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I'm going to keep my statements fairly brief because it's my understanding that Director Mattson has some images and some additional information to provide. Essentially, on February 26th, Fleener Creek, the slide there expanded pretty rapidly. And then, over the course of the last several weeks, really the last month, that slide has continued to encroach eastward towards Centerville Road. So, last Friday, on the 22nd of March, the sheriff proclaimed a local emergency for the Fleener Creek-Centerville slide due to the imminent threat that it poses to the roadway and potential for residents south of that slide to be impacted. Really, the purpose of a local emergency proclamation is to expedite emergency actions, to either create additional access, in this case, for those residents and for emergency response. If Centerville Road, or I should say, when Centerville Road becomes impacted by this slide, it's going to dramatically increase the response times for local fire and local law, and this is becoming a public safety threat. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Director Mattson to discuss actions planned to date and give a little bit more overview on what's going on out there.
So, good afternoon, Chair Bone, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. I do have a series of photos, not very good ones, but they are a series of photos. This one, first one, you've probably all seen on the front page. Yeah, if you could go hit it. This is an overview of the slide, a drone view. You can see how massive the slide is, the road in kind of the middle center, the old parking lot is now, for the trailhead, is now gone. This has moved since a week and a half ago. It was about 62 feet away from the edge of the county road. It's moved to within about 32 feet at this point, and it's continuing to cove off. This is not acting like a regular landslide. It acts kind of like a glacier where it just flakes off in chunks. So, we are very concerned that the road will flake off. In fact, so, jump ahead, we'll just go through the photos. This is the parking lot area. It doesn't look as bad from the top, and this is unfortunate because we are getting people coming up here to take a look at it. BLM has fenced it off. We have signed it off, but there are people still stopping, and in fact, Supervisor Bone and I observed a person go over the edge and hike down it yesterday afternoon while we were out there. Supervisor Bone did have a long conversation with that person after they got to the top, but we do not want people to go there. This is undercut. It's not straight off the edge. It's actually concaved in. So, go ahead, skip this one. Like I said, we're not very good photographers. We're actually road maintenance people. But here's some of the signing we had out there, and you can see where the BLM's fence is. Really doesn't look bad from here. Looks like a beautiful view, but it is not. It is extremely hazardous, and we just want people to stay away from the area. Do not go and try to look over the edge of the bluff. That's why the fence and signs are there. Go ahead and finish up, Nikki. Yeah, similar kinds of things. The most important picture was that first one, showing you the biggest overview. Actually, there are two problems on this road. One is actually between Centerville Beach, heading up to this area, that you cannot see. So, we did have a very productive meeting yesterday afternoon with Bureau of Land Management about the possibility of a short-term detours on their property. We do already have a right-of-way agreement with Bureau of Land Management for prior movement of the road, so we will just need to amend that agreement, and we had pretty good agreement on what to do in the short term. Long-term is going to be much more difficult. It's going to, you know, involve heavy engineering design and much other work, but we're not here to worry about that today. What we're here to do today is hopefully get this ratified so that we can get an agreement with BLM and get some detours punched in before the road actually falls off, because in our mind, it will. And I will turn it back to Ryan, who could talk a little bit about the geologist you're trying to get up here.
Sure. Thank you for that. So, a couple of the actions that the Office of Emergency Services is taking right now. Under Government Code 8632, we're requesting mutual aid through the California Geologic Survey, or CGS. That request was submitted yesterday and is currently pending review and approval by CALOES. What that will do, if we get that mission tasking, is provide a team of engineering geologists to study the landscape out there and give us some information on the speed and, I guess, risk of the slide that will help inform some short- and long-term solutions for the roadway. Just in some anecdotal conversations with the senior engineering geologist locally, there's concern that the soil makeup out there on the BLM land is all the same type, and I'm not a geologist, so I can't speak with any real knowledge, but what they were recommending is moving the road as far east as we possibly can to avoid future subsidence into the ocean, because this is an ongoing issue. This landslide's been active at least since 1992, and with the seismic activity that we have in our region, it's going to continue falling off the side of the cliff. So, with the short-term actions, we need to have some long-term goals in mind, and that study will help inform what those long-term goals are. Chief McCray with CAL FIRE Humboldt-Dulnort Unit is here today for support. It's my understanding he doesn't want to come up and speak, but one thing that he's been doing to help support our efforts is submitting a resource request for a virus flight, which will provide some high-definition imagery that can then be relayed to that geologist team and help inform that study. That's really all I have for today. Turn it over to the board for any questions you may have.
I want to, first, I want to thank Yvette. I think she's the one that called me on a Saturday morning and says, "We just lost most of the parking lot." And I'm going, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." And then, I drove up there Saturday morning and spent six hours there chasing people away. There were people walking out, and then BLM and Tom's right. It's got pretty serious that they've lost. I mean, in all honesty, the road used to go out about 120 feet farther out, so we've lost. I'd venture to say that parking lot was 70 feet wide, and it had some green space in front of it, so we've lost quite a bit in the last two, three weeks. With that being said, we had 15 people with public works, engineers, Kurt McCray, Chief Nicholson from the Ferndale Fire Department. This has turned into an extreme health and safety problem. We have working ranches out there. We have a lot of smaller homesteads. Some of the ranches out there have been in the families for well over 100 years. These aren't what, the majority of them are what you would call, these are not fancy homes out there doing nothing. These are a lot of working families and some that still live on the family homestead. And there's about, it's hard to, but 32 to 38 people that live out there full-time, and we have one road. That's it. And if we were going to make them walk out in, it's not going to be easy to do in the weather and everything else. So, I appreciate everybody coming together. Colin was here this morning, hoping to speak this morning from BLM. They were, they had some great suggestions and some great ideas, but Kurt was worried about fighting fires, and Chief Nicholson, since he's the first responder for that area there, he was really concerned about when they do have a problem, what are they going to do? So, I appreciate, Ryan, I appreciate you reacting to this so quick. Sheriff Hansel, I've been sending a lot of photos and stuff, so, and I think you hit it well. I think we've got less than probably 10 days before the road's gone, the way it's still, there's still pieces dropping off. I had some drone photos today, so. Supervisor Medron?
Well, thanks for your presentation, and I fully support the proclamation. It's absolutely the right thing to do. You know, there's no stopping these kinds of geologic features, but you can slow the erosion through revegetation. It won't stop it, but it can be useful in terms of slowing some of the progression. And the two species that I would highly recommend you consider would be bacchus or coyote brush as well as cianotes. They're both very good species for pioneering revegetation of eroding sites. And the bacchus can be collected directly off the plants at a certain time of year, and you can stand at the bottom of the bluff and just spread it when the winds are blowing up slope. The cianotes takes a little bit of work to scarify the seed, to get it to actually take. But anyway, those are just a couple of little revegetation suggestions.
Is there any public comment on this item? Yvette, you want to say anything?
No.
This is going to be your only opportunity to say anything on this item.
It'll be a Friday.
Okay. You'll call me. All right. I'll bring it back. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to say I support the emergency declaration. I do, however, want to make sure that we take this into consideration in our long-term financing for our road system in general. I hear what you're saying, that there's up to 35 individuals serviced by this particular road, and I think this is, we've talked about, you know, in the future, looking at spaces where we may need to privatize some of these roads, especially if they aren't accessing public lands, although there is another, there is both public access here as well as in the next washover in Guthrie Creek. That being said, I'm supportive of what we're doing right now, but again, this is one of those examples of a place where we will want to, I think, evaluate how we move forward in our kind of bigger plan, really, in our bigger plan to try and bring back costs from our road system, so that's it.
And just so you know, there's two heritage sites out there that were voted in by the federal government of BLM properties, and that's the biggest portion of that out there. And then, they also, this would have been good to probably tell our forefathers in 1891 that they shouldn't let any ranches homestead out there, but I think we're too late. Supervisor Royal?
Thank you. And I understand, you know, from your staff presentation that we need to get some support in analyzing the extent of the damage and refining that. I was just hoping to get a better understanding, because I'm still learning about the process of, you know, looking to the state to declare, you know, disasters with the governor and then, you know, and seeking either state or federal support for these matters. I'm just curious how much information we need to provide about the location. I know it just says a primary ingress egress route, and I just wanted to understand when or if we need to clarify more about the location.
So, I can give a little bit of insight into that. A lot of the clarifying information for the state comes with our claims process. When we submit projects for potential reimbursement, they really drill into the fine details of what action was taken and why. And even with this current resource request we have for CGS assistance, there's, you know, questions around ownership of land, what actions are being taken by the federal government versus what actions are being taken by the county. So, a lot of that is more informal back and forth, but with the process of issuing a local proclamation, it's done very deliberately with very specific things in mind. And really, what we're looking at is waiving certain statutory and regulatory requirements to get emergency work done, and that could be, you know, various permitting requirements that we have, or in this case, requesting state assistance through mutual aid. And the governor, if he decides to proclaim, is going to have a whole other list of statutory requirements that he's willing to waive, committing state resources, state personnel to assist in the effort, and that's going to be a conversation that we have with CALOES to help inform what's needed at the county side. But really, the intent behind a local proclamation is to state that we are beyond our capacity to respond to this, which, for really any small-scale incident in Humboldt County right now, because of the cascading effect we've had from numerous disasters over the course of the last five years, we meet that internal threshold fairly quickly. And just to speak about the reimbursement process, there is a monetary figure that we would have to meet in order to qualify for California Disaster Assistance Act, but that's not a factor that we consider when we proclaim. It's more getting into what are the physical actions needed to address the threat to public safety.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Make a motion, anybody?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Nikki?
Thank you, Chair Bone. I'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Medron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, now we will go to Workplace 2030.
Have a seat. I think we have. Thank you, Nikki. Good afternoon, board members, Chair Bone. In the interest of time, I'll be brief, because I think that we've got a pretty lengthy presentation for you, but my name is Jeremy Clark. I'm the Organization Development, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Manager in Human Resources. About five years ago, the county started a comprehensive culture change initiative. It was called Great Workplace Culture Change. About a year ago, that responsibility was shifted in-house, rebranded to an initiative called Workplace 2030, and And this wraps up the first program year of the adaptation of Workplace 2030. And so with us today, we have chairs of most of the committees so they can present to you a little bit about their process and the recommendations that they came up with. And then on a quick programming note, Crystal Henson, Analyst in Organization Development, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, will be walking you through the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee's recommendations. So with that being said, going to turn it over to Suzanne.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy, and hello to the Board of Supervisors. I'm Suzanne Lapree from Planning and Building. And I will start out with, I was the Chair for Staffing and Professional Development Committee, and we had numerous people that were on our team, and some of those people did not make it across the finish line with us, but I did want to put their names up there because they did do some significant help in working out with all these problems that we had. Let's see. So when we first started the committee, we were given a laundry list of concerns that were presented to us. So we went through all those concerns and narrowed it down to about 10, top 10 concerns. And they're presented there on that slide for you. We went ahead and did some brainstorming and did a survey and tried to narrow those 10 down to about three so that we could, you know, really focus our time and efforts for the remainder of the year. And we came up with, these are the survey results. Job descriptions came in as the highest priority facing employees in the county with written procedures and onboarding coming in second as the highest priority. As you can see, there are some other ones that were on the list that either were neutral to people that were surveyed or came in very low. So we decided to focus on three concerns, job descriptions and teleworking and written procedures and onboarding. Teleworking came into the conversation late in the game, but it was mentioned and the committee agreed that it was important. So we went ahead and threw it in the mix because people in my committee felt like it was very important. So we did that. We did do some breakout groups at that time, assigning two to three members for each of the breakout groups. However, we didn't have a lot of time left and we began to lose people along the way. And so we went ahead and tabled job descriptions and telework. One of the reasons why we decided to table job descriptions is because that would be a very big lift and we had like five or six people that were really contributing to the committee and providing feedback and attending the meetings. And then the telework aspect, I felt like that was, well, I didn't feel alone, but we have a telework policy currently in place. And although there was concerns that it is not being implemented fairly across all the departments, there is something in place and for us to double down on that and spend time and resources addressing that would be not good use of our time. So we went ahead and selected onboarding as our topic, and it was the second highest priority. So we feel really confident that our time and efforts were going to be utilized in a positive manner. And these are the issues that we were facing as collaboratively. We discussed them. New hires often get brief introductions with no real connection. There's a lack of proper introduction, which could lead to retention issues. Often employees are felt like they are thrown into a sink or swim scenario when on-boarded to their position. I thought that was a good vote. Anyways, supervisors also need guidance to onboard new hires, when to complete evaluations and setting expectations early on of the position and the role, and then checking in Not assigning a team mentor or a trainer. These are things that we found were issues. There is a lack of adequate overview of the department or unit and its roles and services in the community, and so an introduction video was maybe a path that we could resolve that. That being said, I'm actually not going off on notes, so. We created these, the Workplace 2030 Staffing and Professional Development Committee drafted an onboarding checklist and an onboarding toolkit. Luckily, we collaborated with DHHS and Connie Beck and her team over at the Quality Management Services Unit for Behavioral Health provided these checklists to us, and we revamped them and modified them so that they could be utilized throughout other departments. And we presented these checklists to HR and our sponsors, which is Bennett Hoffman and Zachary O'Hannon. So that ends my portion of the presentation, and I will pass it over to Crystal.
Okay. Okay, so as Suzanne mentioned before, we looked at an idea for an onboarding video, and the idea was to develop a series of short informational commercials for each department at the county of Humboldt to provide new employees, members of the community, an opportunity to learn about the services offered. And we have an example of our video to show you today. One thing we all agreed on in the committee is that it would have made our job in networking with other departments and understanding the services that the county offers a little bit easier if we had known more about the different county agencies when we were hired. So our hope is that we can create a series of these videos for most departments that could be shown to new county employees. And we could also use these videos for television advertising to educate the public on what services the county has to offer, things we wish the public knew about our departments and the location of our services. So here's our quick 90-second commercial for child support.
North Coast Regional Child Support Services is here to help families understand and feel supported through some of the difficulties of navigating two households. At North Coast Regional Child Support Services, we understand that families are complex. Every situation is unique and every parent has a right to be heard and to understand the child support process. There is no income qualification to receiving child support services. Anyone can request services, and there are very few reasons that a request would be denied. One of the most common misconceptions about child support services is that as soon as a parent receives a child support court order, the office automatically becomes involved. This is not true. Parents who have received or are interested in obtaining a child support court order and would like the assistance of child support services must fill out a simple form to request services. What types of services does North Coast Regional Child Support provide? Enforcing court orders for support? Obtaining child and medical support orders? Providing accurate payment records for the parent paying support as well as the parent receiving support? Providing free DNA testing to establish paternity based on individual case needs? Locating absent parents? Modifying existing support orders? Acting as a neutral third party to help parents and guardians reach agreements when appropriate? For your convenience, North Coast Regional Child Support Services are open Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Eureka, McKinleyville, and Weaverville. Walk-ins are welcome, but appointments are encouraged. To learn more about child support services, call 707-441-3232. Or to open a case, use our simplified form.
All right. And then we plan to create an easy form that a department can use to fill out requesting to have a commercial made. We have started to draft up a step-by-step process to do this and make this as simple and easy as possible to have departments participate. By creating contracts with this project ahead of time, we can make this simpler and more affordable for everyone. We imagine that HR could even create an educational video that highlights the benefits of being a county employee to help advertise and promote recruitment opportunities to the public. And so next steps will be implementation, looking at our onboarding policy, looking for ways to better incorporate the onboarding templates, and again, create the department introductory videos. All right. And as Jeremy mentioned, I am stepping in for Oliver today. He had a scheduling conflict. And so on behalf of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, it's been a pleasure to work over the last year. There has been a very robust and varied presence. And yeah. So when we're looking, when the committee, DEI committee was looking for initiatives to focus on, there were three main topics identified. One was the continuity of DEI work. How does one pass the baton between cohorts or between efforts? The idea of an employee experience or DEI portfolio, portal, sorry. And what they, what we ended up deciding to focus on was the bili literacy certification improvements, as the other two topics were very comprehensive in scope and we're working towards making sure the continuity is there. And so we started with a lot of research, including a internal policy review. We looked at different counties and municipalities to see, you know, what is currently being used. We also referenced the 2021 DEI survey results and had interviews with members of various county departments, previous DEI committee members, and union representatives. Ultimately, again, looking at the bili literacy certification improvements, we identified a few issues, including inconsistent policies, very examined software that wasn't so intuitive, the fact that bili literacy pay is not standardized across all classifications, and that there isn't mechanisms in place to support staff who have failed examinations or want, you know, more assistance in being prepared. The ideas for actions by the committee include creating a standardized policy that can be used throughout the county of Humboldt, provide a test provider whose system is more intuitive and accessible, and also expand that testing to people to include ASL, American Sign Language, create pay incentives for certified staff, and establish a minimum amount all departments in the county can use. This will help classification where bili literacy is not covered in their MOU. And as far as desired outcomes, we're looking to provide clarity, awareness, and understanding for staff eligible, provide standardized pay, update testing to improve accessibility and increase passing score, and ultimately build a workforce that is culturally responsive and reflective of our community. And again, all this is in alignment with the county of Humboldt strategic plan that was recently published. Under the section, four opportunities to provide linguistic training and enhance the employee certification process. And with that said, I will pass the microphone to Latrice.
Good afternoon. I'm here, and also Russ Kellin from DHHS will be kind of sharing this endeavor with me. So I'm going to kind of start it up and then have to bear with me, I haven't. So at a glance here is our contributors, and like some of the other committees said, we started off with a hefty list and ended with kind of a handful that were the main core at the end, but I can say that we demonstrated the ability across the county level to work using the Microsoft Teams in a very productive way. So we like to highlight that as our getting through that. And so we'll get into that more, but we'd like to kind of promote that as our success story. We found that under teaming collaboration, there were several supporting forces surrounding, you know, that topic, including supportive teamwork, which is working better together in teams and units, departmental collaboration, working better across the entire departments, flexibility, the ability to work from wherever the job takes us. Encourage participation, which is an increased ability to participate in the work culture across the county, interactive workforce, increase the inter and intra-office communications, collaboration, and teamwork in the entire county, teamwork and collaboration, which support can come from many directions, coworkers, supervision, supervisors, partners, you know, across all levels, is teamwork, not just what we may think of as, you know, management. And then also a sense of belonging and shared effort. Some of the identified problems were a lack of collaboration, whether it be inter-agency or interdepartmental, inconsistent communication inside and outside of departments, also top-down communication and interaction has not always been perceived as collaborative, also kind of a silo effect with repeated throughout the county, which creates roadblocks, backlogs, and duplicate efforts. And also that other departments doesn't know what the partner department, what other partner projects are doing, processes, and interpenances. Employees don't always know where to go for answers or help or input. So this, the committee identified this as one of the highest priorities facing our county. And we did find out that the HUM 21 work group was working on like having open houses for different departments. If, as a county, we can have more open houses, we think that that could help kind of like demystifying the mess, putting a face with the name, just kind of encouraging that. So our committee didn't take that on as something because it was already being done in another work group under the HUM 21. Other identified problems, priority, which came close, was lack of recognition and appreciation for employees and service to the public, lack of trust, just a general lack of trust, underutilized resources such as the county website. We found some data that there's lots of things on the county website, but sometimes it's hard to find certain things like a survey or how to give feedback. Also, lack of clear communication, which can include too many emails to handle on a daily basis, long periods with no communication, and then rapid-fire emails bottoming down the inbox and inconsistent communication approach. And then also document versions and copies. So sometimes there can be many documents, and it can be frustration because there are several copies in emails and flying around, but there's not one, you know, main source that's keeping track of all the most updated copy. And also, priority three, which is small groups with communication silos. So again, some departments have small cohesive groups that do not transfer knowledge or info to other work groups. So a lot of times, things on what's working with amongst each other may not, it could be really working really well, but then this other department could be struggling, and that could be information that could be shared. And also communication gaps, which is up, down, and around across the county. Also, a lack of trust, which I said earlier, but that was with the survey that came out, that was, many reported a general lack of trust. And I think when I was participating in some smaller interviews of, in another part of this Workplace 2030, there were some people who didn't even want to identify themselves for fear of, because things are so small, if they revealed who their, what their job title was, that it could come back to them. So there's definitely sometimes just a general trust of even trying to get to the root of problems to change culture, you know, just in general. And so we do have recommendations, and I'm going to let Russ take over from here.
Appreciate the opportunity. Okay, so of all that long list of priority one, two, and three things, we came up with four different items to really focus on. And one was QR codes, which I saw in the previous slide. And one was QR codes, which I saw in the previous slide where they used a QR code. We all have cell phones, most people do, not everybody, but a lot of people do. That can reduce paper, that can reduce a lot of things, and the information is always updated on the site that we point them to. So if we do need to update information, they can go straight to that source and always get the latest information. If we print it out and hand it out in paper form, that's a static information. So one of the ways we, we looked at that and said, hey, we can have a QR code. Teams in Office 365, as Latrice said, we use Teams a lot in order to even accomplish this task. In fact, the original presentation we had, we created from scratch the presentation in two days in order to, to present earlier. And that is unheard of. I've never been able to put a full presentation together in two days. We had a total of eight different people working on it at the same time because we were using Teams, which is a collaborative tool that the county now owns. We also want to promote a positive work environment through recognition, which Latrice said before, and the implementation of kindness kits. So the QR codes are a really cute, cute shortcut to get people to the information that they need. As she mentioned, some of that information is somewhat buried within our website. It's difficult to find sometimes. I know we can redesign it, but that's also a big lift. Sometimes it's easier to just point people straight to the information that we need when we're out in the field and we're delivering that to them and we're face-to-face with them. So in that, we developed a card in, so this is just a "How Do You Think I'm Doing?" card. We used a Canva application, which points to the humboldt.gov.org website, and it's received, the results are received by the CAO's office. This card was developed by the committee as a resource to collect feedback, hopefully positive. The QR code takes people directly to the customer satisfaction survey form on the county's webpage, and the intent is to collect and highlight positive feedback from community members. And these cards could be offered to anyone who interacts with the public as well as put in public-facing spaces such as reception areas. The QR codes can also be generated for brochures, flyers, and even business cards to direct people to more information about the subject. And the private industry has fully embraced the technology, and with so many people using cell phones these days, we can supplement informational flyers with QR codes pointing to site, sites with detailed information, additional links, and FAQs. We believe the community could benefit from the county utilizing this form of communication. It also allows us to maintain and update the published information, as I said before, without having to update publications, which could be cost-saving. And then Microsoft Teams in Office 365. I could actually spend an hour discussing the benefit of Teams, just Teams, and will do my best to just give you a quick overview of what it is. Teams, in addition to the collaborative editing of documents, a fully-launched Office 365 includes a powerhouse of realized teamwork and collaboration in an application called Microsoft Teams. This work group met through the Teams application weekly through a scheduled meeting, as well as throughout the work week, in short text-based messages to share new insights and plan for upcoming projects. Our work group comprised members of multiple different departments and geographic locations, some of which were working from home as their office was being repaired. With Microsoft Teams, our chairperson was able to share their screen to reveal a pre-designed agenda and keep the conversation on topic as we were able to share resources through the SharePoint Document Library, even though none of us shared the same network drive. In short, our work group was about how to make teamwork and collaboration happen. So we beta-tested the application tailored just for that purpose, and it worked great. In October, we launched it here in the county, and it's been met with different levels of excitement. I'm an IT person, so I'm very excited about it. Microsoft Teams in Office 365 will be deployed, it has been. It was deployed on All Hands Training Day, and there's optional live training, and there was recorded. We also have different links all over the place. So it's, it is an awesome tool, as far as I'm concerned. Recognition, this is another big issue that came up, and it affected morale. And our goal was to create a more positive work environment and create a culture of gratitude. And recognition seemed to permeate the reported challenges all through our survey. One way to show appreciation is to praise employees in a more public manner. Again, Teams, Microsoft Teams has a built-in feature called Praise, and you can see an example of that up on the screen. With this, supervisors and employees can post praise messages in Teams chats, posts, and elsewhere. It's a quick way to say thank you when people are caught doing something good. Those who have already been using Teams have found that it increases morale, sets a tone of appreciation within the unit and organization, and ends up spreading in a good way. Teams keeps track of all the praise you send out and receive. It's a great way to remember who has done great things and to remind ourselves that, you know what, we're appreciated on those more challenging days. And then we get to employee excellence awards. So in this, we, we know that the County of Humboldt, we talked about keychains, something that is a low-cost item, again, something to encourage people through that. Encourage recognition pins for badges across the departments. It's just something you can put an affixed to your ID badge, maybe a one-year, five-year, ten-year, et cetera. Again, low cost. Monthly or quarterly within departments, when those names entered for major prizes. We can upgrade the Intranet website to utilize recognition efforts across the departments. We can also create Teams to do that as well, and, and do other collaborative efforts. And then there's ribbons that can actually be affixed to name badges, too. Again, not all departments can utilize this, but it's, it's how they want to implement it. Did you want to go over the kindness kits? Thank you, Latrice.
So under DHHS, there was a work group that launched kindness kits. And I meant to grab mine from the front desk area, and I forgot to grab it to kind of pass around. But there's kind of a picture, so if you think of an emergency kit, first aid kit, instead it would be things to boost morale. So it could be things such as fidget toys, squishies, things of no cost value, pins, rubber duckies, vinyl stickers, just things that you could take out and hand to someone when, you know, you want to just like boost the morale. It's just like, it's a form of something that could be in the office that people could go to. It may sound kind of like childish, but sometimes it's the little things that could bring a person's smile to them. So again, it's just looking at a way and a means to provide different departments something that it has, it has to kind of like, people have to kind of buy into it, you know? We were thinking as, as a team, if we had a little introduction, went to people's meetings and talked to them about it, see if there's someone who's really the kind of spearhead doing the kindness kits every month, you know, making sure it's still replenished and different things like. It, it does take a little work, a little effort, someone to buy into it. But it's, again, could be something departments could buy into. I mean, we're not saying that they have to do it, but it's, it's a means and a way for, to be introduced, to help boost morale. I think a lot of times, we're very punitive, we all, if, if there's a complaint or something's done, we can be reactive to that, but this is just kind of a way to, on an ongoing basis, kind of help build, build morale and build kindness in, in our, in our culture. And it can be between all staff and anyone. So in that, as we are transitioning from doing this for the year, and there will be a new group created sometimes in the next few months, we wanted to just reflect on the lessons learned from this process as a group. And there was a lot of attrition, and some folks were unable to commit to the committee. We discussed that, how the list was very long before, and then it kind of dwindled down. And also that, from the different types of communication, finding things that work best for the team. Also, it would have been helpful to have previous committee work from the beginning so that we're not reinventing the wheel, our knowledge to know what has been tried in the past, and also acknowledging the work of the previous committee members for, for the next group to consider if there were special things that they would like to see move forward or things. It's just kind of like collaboration and, and warm handoffs. Also, we rotated facilitators of the meeting, and we had one core chair representative. So we kind of had a shared power and leadership within the group. And we did lots of good work and ideas, were floating around. Some just needed revamping and new energy oversight, like, there were a lot of things out there. Like, we saw HUM 21 was in effect, things on the website, like we say, lots of things have been started, but then it just may have been stalled or something. So when, when we're doing this type of work, I've been part of the Secondary Traumatic Stress Initiative a couple of years ago, and we worked really hard to put together a policy. COVID happened, that kind of just drizzled out. And I think sometimes it's hard to, to stay encouraged with these type of things because as staff changes happen and people move or leave, it gets, it gets difficult. So it was even hard for me to, to have faith that even though I worked a year on this project, that the work wouldn't just not pedal out and not go anywhere. That we, we keep putting forth the energy to, to create a culture change in what we want to be so that, yes, people do want to work for the county, instead of so many times people saying they don't want to work for the county or, you know, there's roadblocks. So I think it's, it's important, and I'm honored to have been part of this process. I don't know if anyone has questions, but I'll move it on to the fourth group.
Can everybody hear me okay? Excellent. Just gonna get myself set up here. Members of the board, COAs, Council miles. I know you guys have had a long day, so I'm hoping that this will be engaging and we'll end with a bang. I ask each of you to please imagine a culture where employees want to come to work. They feel valued, they feel like they are contributing to the county's vision of serving our communities. What an amazing vision that is. We're not there yet, but we can be. We can have a culture that fosters employee retention, individual commitment to the success of this organization and the community as a whole, and creating clear and open communication lines across all levels of departments. And I need to do the slide here, there we go. So the management and leadership team, we embarked on a one-year journey. We were tasked with developing a change initiative to help the County of Humboldt realize this vision. Our committee included county employees from across many different departments, and that included small and larger departments, as well as departments that had appointed and elected department heads. I would like to thank Jeremy Clark, thank you very much, for his leadership, which has been amazing. I'd also like to thank Crystal, thank you very much, for all of the support and contribution provided there as well. I also, even though they're not able to be here, want to thank every team member represented on that slide for the amazing work that they contributed. Their efforts are clear and present in what I'm presenting to you today and the excellence of the work product. Our objective had three elements. Examining problems and identifying possible solutions, developing a recommendation plan, and preparing a change initiative that departments could roll out. We started with finding a baseline. We accomplished this by turning the mission, vision statement of the county into an evaluation and created a report card. As you can see from the slide there, there's three areas that ranked the lowest. Service excellence, teamwork, and professionalism. For this reason, we focused in these three areas. Through a series of methods, we identified 51 problems. They're represented there on that slide. There's a lot of problems there. We focused our efforts, though, on the three lowest-ranking value categories, and we were able to whittle that 51 problems down to 18. We then took a journey to look under the surface of those problems to evaluate what the root causes were, and we came up with some common threads. Employees do not feel valued or included in decisions that affect their work. Departments oftentimes will employ an emotion-based or intuition-based decision-making approach instead of budget-based or service-based decision-making approaches. Communication chains along department lines are oftentimes broken and ineffective, and information is lost when employees sever employment, and that creates a knowledge vacuum, requires recreating processes and procedures, and results in inconsistencies and increased costs. Oh, and I skipped it, I'm sorry. I'm on the next slide, I apologize. We developed two recommended solutions. The first is succession planning, and the second is to rebuild department communication chains that will measure employee feedback and engagement, provide guidance for budget-based and service-based decision-making, provide guidance for effective meetings, and provide guidance for engaging employees and celebrating their successes. As the county is already working on a succession planning change initiative, we decided to set that particular item aside and really focus on the second viable solution, and that was to create an employee engagement and feedback program. We developed information and resources that include a way to administer engagement and feedback surveys within departments. We developed a reference guide to assist in budget-based and service-based decision-making. We created a reference guide on how to hold more effective meetings. And we developed a strategy and a resource guide for engaging employees and celebrating team successes. Bless you. We brought the solution to life by creating an easy-to-access website. We utilized the county's existing HUMNet internal website, and we added information and resources in the suite of reference guides to, to sections underneath the Department of Human Resources, under the Workplace 2030 page, as well as in the Managers' Resource page. And if you go there today, they're already present. I encourage you to start the Managers' Resources page because it's just prettier. We also developed a communication plan on how the Steering Committee can roll out this initiative to departments and how they can utilize it effectively. So now what? The success of this change initiative depends on two things. It depends on commitment and investment by this board and department leadership. So we're asking you, as the Board of Supervisors, to please support this initiative and to encourage department leadership to do the same. Together, we can realize our vision, and we can live out our values in a meaningful way. Thank you so much for your time today, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Bring it back on, so as a row.
This is all fantastic work, thank you so much. And, and it is, morale is such a tough nut to crack. I, and I feel that this work will be more important than ever in the next few years as we're, you know, addressing challenges around resources that are significant. But I, you know, I, I appreciate the work you've done to kind of identify what the top concerns are that are really rising, rising to the, to the tippy-top for employees, and, and I think we'll utilize this very much. I am curious about succession planning. I may have just missed in, in the process. Could you describe a little bit more about those tools that, and what that has looked like in your research with different departments? That is definitely top of mind for me right now.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I actually didn't include information about succession planning just for the time-constrained brevity's sake. However, we did provide to the Steering Committee a full recommendation document, I think it's about nine or 10 pages, that pretty detailedly outlines what we found in our reviewing, the succession planning process currently in place. succession planning process currently in place and the needs there. We also made a recommendation on how we could implement some succession planning here in the county. I did not review that information, though, and I did not bring that documentation with me today, just for the sake of brevity, was really wanting to focus on the work that our team did. However, I would be happy to email that to you, and that would provide a lot more detail than I could synthesize in this moment. I can try if you'd like to hear some highlights.
I think the email, since you don't have it in front of you, the email would probably suffice, and then they can spend their time with it.
I'll make that priority when I get back to the office.
I would just add that two of our departments are currently undergoing a succession planning initiative with one of the consultants that we work with for our CSAC executive training.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Supervisor, John.
Well, thank you all so much for your work. It's very enlightening, and as you all know, we have real serious budget issues happening in the county, not only this year but over the next few years. And certainly, one of the best ways to handle that is to increase employee morale and communication and onboarding and succession planning. All of these things is an investment well worth, whatever effort it takes. And I think you'll find this board's very supportive of the work you've done, and now the real work begins to try and implement, not try, but to implement, all of this work. So I want to thank you for that because, you know, we're looking at reorganization work, we're looking at all kinds of different things. But again, when we improve the employees' ability to be able to perform, we increase that morale, people get up in the morning going, I'm going to work. Like you said, I want to work for the county. Still waiting for those bumper stickers. You remember the ones, you know, my child is going. Anyway, thank you so much. It's really such an important and valuable piece of the effort we're all trying to make here. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is this an action item, or do we just accept it? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for the presentation. I am curious to hear more, and this can come in an email form, but the lack of trust is something we hear a lot throughout the organization, and so I would be interested to hear more of the, where it stems from, and what people think the solutions are. I saw a little bit of what you guys referenced, too, but that trust is really a key thing, and it seems to be over our channel, in the conversation, in every conversation when we talk about departments and boards and so forth and so on. So I am curious there. But I do really appreciate the presentation and the work that you've done in this.
The management and leadership team, as part of our deep dive into the root causes of the issues, we actually have a document that will summarize key factors that contributed to trust issues, so I'd be happy to share that, if that's okay.
Absolutely. And before we move on, if I may just say, I've had the pleasure of working fairly closely with this group over the last year, and one thing that I just want to acknowledge is, you know, their participation in Workplace 2030 is, in addition to their primary responsibilities in their home departments and in their roles, and I just want to say, you know, it has definitely been a great pleasure of mine to work with you all over the course of the last year, and thank you so much because it is not easy to lead this work and be committed to this work, because there's a million other things, literally, that you could be doing. But I really appreciate all of your hard work over this, and I think the agency will be better. And finally, I'd just say, from a board perspective, one of the best parts about working for the county is that sometimes you have to hear some challenging, some messages that may not be positive. And I think, if we're being honest, they've outlined a litany of problems that our organization faces, and I really appreciate that your board never shies away from hearing those difficult words. And to Supervisor Madron's point, you always offer your strong support, and so for that, I thank you.
All right. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, a question on the trust issue. I was just wondering, is that external or internal? I wasn't really quite clear, and maybe we'll get that information. Like, was the feeling of, was that the feeling of not feeling trusted as employees, or is it, or is it the feeling of trust within the hierarchy of the organization between employees and supervisors? I just...
It's both, and it's across pretty consistently all departments that we were able to identify. Employees don't feel empowered or trusted to do the work that they've been hired to do or equipped to do it, and employees feel that their leadership isn't trustworthy.
Okay.
And that'll be kind of outlined in that second document that I mentioned. When we took a pretty deep dive, we identified problem statements, and we really wanted to understand what the root causes behind problems raised by employees, so that way we could really identify, is this just a feeling? Is this an isolated incident? Or is this a common thread that needs to be identified for what it is and addressed? And we found that there were a lot of leanings towards it's a pretty consistent problem that needs to be addressed.
Okay, and second was the reference to the website and the difficulty in its use. Is that, again, by employees, or is this an external question, issue? Do you see about it?
Yes. Both. Okay. As an employee, I've had difficulty finding some things on the website. And that's on the Intranet, and then on our Internet, which is our public-facing side of that, the public has had difficulty or challenges finding certain information. So we tried to identify ways to quickly get them to the information, any other supporting document around that, information around that. To redesign the website, either public or Intranet, is quite a big lift. And the quick fix is to point people directly to the information based off like a QR code or something like that, where they can quickly go straight to the information they need because they're in that position right now to get that information. Let's get it to them. And I think that's, then, as time goes by and when we have the bandwidth to do so, we can look at maybe revamping some of the design and flow of the website. We can go into the analysis and statistics, browsing statistics, where people get stuck and where they drop off. But that's, again, it's a lot of work to do that. I've done it twice.
Yeah, and I mean, everybody's brain works a little differently, too, and how the threads that they follow or visual cues that help direct them can be individual. So, I appreciate that. Those are just like the two highlights of that, and I just, you know, more than that, I just appreciate the work that you guys are doing. This is important. We need to have those feedback loops. We are just iterating towards better, always, and this is how we do it. So I'm very, very impressed and very thankful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may just have a moment to say, this is likely the last chance, the last opportunity that you all will have to hear from my analyst, Crystal Henson. I just want to, as she goes on to sort of brighter pastures, I want to take a second to be a bad boss and embarrass her and just say, a lot of the things that we accomplished over the last year would not have been possible without Crystal's dedication, hard work. You definitely will be missed. I mean, if you just look at the last week alone, we were able to deliver diversity consent to over 200 people representing 10 different organizations at our workshop alone on Friday, and that wouldn't have happened without Crystal's strong support. So I just want to say, thank you very much, Crystal.
All right. Good. With that, I'll ask for a public comment. Thank everybody for their public comment. Bring it back. Does everybody approve, accept this proposal?
A move that we accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition. unanimous. Thank you guys very much. Whatever, I was going to repeat what everybody said, but I didn't feel like wasting your time. So, good job.
Thank you.
With that, we're out of here.